Good evening and welcome to City Council. We really appreciate everyone that is here today for our council meeting and hope to get some good engagement. I'm going to start with calling this meeting to order and with the roll call, please.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Here.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Here.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Stein?
Here.
Councilmember Tracy?
Here.
Councilmember Worthington?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here.
Next, we will invite from Connect Church Pastor Bert Corley. Please all arise.
I got to touch anything here?
You're good.
Good deal. Let's go to the Lord in prayer. Gracious heavenly Father God, we thank you and praise you for your divine providence. And your word says that man plans his ways, but you guide his steps. And Father, that's what we're asking for this evening, is that you guide the steps of our government officials as they go about the difficult task of providing for the needs of the immediate and the present and balancing that with the prudence of future planning, Father. And as always, it seems the needs are greater than the resources. And so, we just ask for wisdom and discernment as they go about providing the right resources for the right need at the right time. Father, we ask a special blessing on our public safety officials this evening and just our law enforcement, our fire and rescue, and our EMS professionals, Father. They get the duty of seeing humankind at its worst on a daily basis. And they see us, not only our worst, but our most vulnerable, Father. And it takes a toll on them mentally, emotionally, and spiritually, Father. It takes a toll on their families. And so, we ask a special blessing upon them and their families and ask that you keep them safe. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Now, I'll have the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have one citizen's request to address council on something that is not on our agenda and like to invite Timothy Martin to come address council, please.
We ready?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. For the last nine months, my family and I have been the target of a harassment campaign by two city employees attempting to bully us into doing something that puts our family and property into danger. When asked why they are bullying us this way, they have replied, "We are just doing our jobs, our hands are tied, and the city council has tasked and ordered us to do these things." According to these two individuals, the city council has both ordered and condones these actions towards myself and my family. Let's look at these actions and you can tell me. The harassment began when these individuals contacted my supervisor to see how and when to best get a hold of me. What followed was a string of 11 visits by these individuals or their coworkers to our house, coincidentally during the one week a month I worked night shifts. During the first visit, these two individuals confronted our son without introducing themselves or stating their business. They demanded to know if his father or mother was home. Our son told him that I was at home but sleeping because I was working night shift. They then demanded to know when I would be up. Our son stated that he wasn't sure because it varied from day to day. This seemed to infuriate one of the individuals who snarled, "We will be back," at our son. Then, these two individuals proceeded to come back to our house every couple of hours to harass our son to see if I was awake yet until out of fear and concern, he felt obligated to wake me up. A few weeks ago, when I was again on night shifts, my son and neighbor observed city employees visiting my house and knocking on my door six times over the course of four business days. I was also told that some of these employees would sit in their vehicles in front of our house for long periods of time. All of this seemed to culminate on 1/27/23 when a police officer arrived at our house to deliver paperwork with pictures of our house and fence accompanied with threats of court appearances and fines if we did not comply with their demands. To summarize, these two individuals have threatened, harassed, and bullied my family and myself in an attempt to force us to remove or lower our eight-foot fence and put our backyard into a situation which is dangerous for ourselves, our pets, our gardens, our herb beds, and our fruit and nut trees. They or their coworkers have visited my house a total of 15 times that I'm aware of. There have also been an additional 15 or more occurrences of these individuals or their coworkers doing drive-bys and parking in front of our neighbors' houses to take pictures of our fence and house. They have threatened us multiple times with leans against the house, court appearances, and severe fines. This represents a gross campaign of harassment and bullying. So, the question I present to the council today is, do you condone and agree with the bullying practices of your employees towards the constituents whom you have sworn to serve and protect?
Ryan, do you have any enlightenment for us on this situation?
This is an active case. There are multiple violations. I don't know that we should be talking about in open session and refer to the city attorney.
Corey?
No, I agree. This is an open municipal court case. It shouldn't be talked about in this environment.
I'm sorry for the things that you're experiencing and your frustrations. Of course, the city council always advocates for respect, and we've often talked about face-to-face conversations because it's better than a nasty letter in the mail. Sounds like there's not a lot more we can talk about if this is an open court case, except for that the council did not make any motions or movements or votes to change the fencing law at this time, as far as what would be allowed for the height of a fence.
So, when did this become a court case?
It's an open code case, sorry.
Sorry, an open code case, so our correction.
So, I mean, you have my permission to talk about it?
If somebody has a complaint, which board? Is this council the board that they go to?
If everyone that was involved in a code compliance issue went to city council, it would be extremely difficult to prosecute cases under our code. Ryan is the supervisor of code, and so, I would encourage any complaint to go through Ryan, but to talk about an active code case while that case is pending and before compliance has been achieved, I don't think this is the right venue.
So, Ryan is the one that I would recommend that you sitting down and having a face-to-face conversation with, where you maybe can have more open conversations. And Ryan, in the meantime, I would recommend maybe doing a little bit of research on our part to finding about what's been happening on our side and making sure that it follows our expectations of professionalism and customer service.
We can do that.
Thank you.
Timothy, what's your address?
1261 Baldwin Avenue.
Thank you.
Is that it?
So, I think at that time, it's coming to meet with Ryan. You could also invite a council member in your district to join you if you wish.
Okay. Where do I set that up at?
We can set it up first thing tomorrow if you'd like.
And I'm the councilman in your district, so you can also come in.
That work for you?
Yep.
What time? Okay. Here?
No, upstairs.
When?
8:00.
Tomorrow? Unfortunately, I can't make it. I have a doctor's appointment at 8:30 tomorrow morning. I apologize, I cannot make it tomorrow morning.
It's up to you if you'd like it.
Can we move it?
I'm a large council member. I'm happy to sit in, or I'm happy to move it to when councilmember Dennehy can attend.
Okay.
Whichever you would prefer, sir, of course.
That's fine. 8:00 tomorrow? All right? Thank you. Have a good one.
Thank you for addressing council. We appreciate you being here. And we now have time for councilmember announcements. Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
I do have one, and that is, I'm just happy to say that we're not having Carol in this Wednesday since we already had it. So, we're not asking for volunteers.
Oh, very nice. Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have two. I have the pleasure of serving as the city council's representative to the library and museum board, and I wanted to share the 2022 stats because I think that they're really exciting. So, at the museum, they had 4,847 contacts in all of 2022, and they are already at 930 for January. I bet most people can guess why there is a huge uptick in what's going on at the museum, but highly recommend that if folks haven't stopped by on Fridays and Saturdays to check out the ongoing paleontological work that you do. So, it's open from 10 to 4. Library, total patrons in 2022, 50,694, who checked out 1,021, 171 physical items, so over 120,000, which is pretty exciting. And there were over, there were 887 new library card holders just in the year 2022, which I think is pretty fantastic. I also just wanted to flag that this Friday is Night to Shine, which is a prom night experience for people with special needs ages 14 and older. The Night to Shine Committee has 133 honored guests signed up to participate this Friday, and they are accepting, you know, individuals with special needs who would like to sign up all the way up until Friday. So, it's happening at the Vineyard Church, and you can go to vineyardlive.org if somebody would like to attend and has not yet signed up. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Schmisher. That is exciting on all points. I would like to also give a report. I represent the city on the regional opioid committee. These are the opioid funds from a pharmaceutical lawsuit. And just let you know that they're starting to do execution on three different subjects. Execution for anti-stigma campaign encouraging people in the region to go seek help if they have opioid addictions or substance abuse addictions. There's also youth prevention funding to help programs to keep kids from getting on substance abuse in the first place. And then, lastly, there are some stipends where people who work in behavioral health that help people with addictions, that they can get a workforce stipend to help make it so that they can afford to live in our communities and provide these really important services. There are not enough behavioral health workers in Colorado in general. And so, those are the three items that the region has chosen to execute, and we're on our way of doing that. Also, Canyon City itself has a very tiny part of those funds that we were allotted from the pharmaceutical companies and have been given through the state of Colorado and are partnering with the schools just to help bolster some of their programs they already have in existence for youth prevention for substance abuse. Any other announcements this time? Okay. If not, then I'll invite Ryan to give our consent agenda overview.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Item 7A is to approve the minutes for the regular city council meeting on January 17th, the vision committee meeting on January 18th, the special city council meeting on January 9th, the special city council meeting on January 18th, the FEDC banquet for January 20th, and the energy committee meeting on January 23rd. 7B is to authorize the city administrators to sign a professional services agreement with Livable Cities Studio for the Clock Tower Plaza design project. That's RFP 5222. 7C authorizes the city administrator to sign a parking lot agreement with a step back in time. 7D awards bid 923-8102 polymer to Naco Company in an amount not to exceed $57,000. 7E awards bid 1023 for 20 tons custom blend fertilizer to Helena Agri Enterprises in an amount not to exceed $25,000. 7F awards bid 1123 for Vermeer SC 362 stump grinder to Vermeer Sales and Service in an amount not to exceed $33,000. 7G awards bid 1223 for First Products UA 60 aerator and seed box to Taza Supplies in an amount not to exceed $24,200. 7H awards bid 1423 for Veterans Park Chain Link fencing to Peak Fencing in an amount not to exceed $34,380. 7I awards bid 2723 tablets to SHI under Sourcewell contract in an amount not to exceed $8,114.49. 7J awards bid 2823 annual purchase of water meters to Core and Main of Henderson, Colorado in an amount not to exceed $80,000. 7K is to receive and file a list of bills and cash dispersments and P-card dispersments. And 7L awards bid 1523 for Toro Model 7202 commercial turf mower to G&amp;G mower in an amount not to exceed $22,438.
Thank you, Ryan. Are there any questions for Ryan on any of the agenda items? Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had one flag on 7K, the detail of cash dispersments for the American Data Group software maintenance. The amount for this, $20,947, was well over the charter limit of $6,500 for expenditures. So, I just wanted to flag that because I believe things like that should come to council for prior notification. Thanks.
Any other questions?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Hi. I just noticed that on item 7D, as in dog, that it should say NALCO, I believe, instead of Naco, so I just thought it would be important to point that out.
Thank you. Patrick, are you here to represent the Clock Tower Plaza? Do you want to come in and address council about that? I think that for the public record, it'll be nice to have some words.
Well, I can certainly speak to any questions that council may have. As you recall, in 2021, we adopted our comprehensive plan, the first one in 20 years. Third Street and in particular, the Clock Tower Plaza were highly recommended projects for downtown. The idea behind this project is, right now, Clock Tower Plaza serves as sort of an underutilized space for overflow parking, and we'd like to give it some urban engagement, make it kind of a cool urban space. And to do this, we obviously want to seek some public input, so we put out an RFP on this after obtaining a grant from Ready, Department of Local Affairs, matching it with a budget allocation that council made for, I believe it was actually last year's budget that rolled over into this year's budget. We also have a contingency for consultants' fees that will help pay for this. Should council authorize the city administrator to sign this request for professional services, the firm that we selected after competitive bid process and a series of interviews with selection committee, we were very fortunate to have councilmember Schmisher as part of that committee. The firm we've selected to go with is called Livable Cities Studio. They are located in the Denver area. They are very excited to get started working on this, and we should be getting the public outreach engagement phase of this going very soon.
Thank you. Amy, do you have any insights for us as a council during that process?
Sure. Patrick did a fantastic job heading up that technical evaluation panel, and I just want to compliment him specifically on continuing to focus on the need for public engagement early in the process to ensure that we're not just presenting as a fait accompli ideas, but rather soliciting what does the public actually want to see in the Clock Tower Plaza, and then actually coming back with two to three concepts that folks can again have input on and determine the way forward as a community. So, thank you so much for your leadership of that.
Thank you.
Absolutely agree with that. Thank you. Thank you for your time you put in as well, for contributing. One of those things that I didn't see necessarily mentioned in here, but, and I will hopefully, you know, give my input to when they're seeking it, but for my entire time I've been on council and as mayor, whenever we have meetings with downtown, their number one request is to have public restrooms. And so, I would really, and just last week, we had another meeting with downtown partners, and again, public restrooms were brought up. And so, I'd love to at least see that idea entertained as a possibility, as a place where we could provide that service to our downtown.
I would encourage you to participate in the public outreach, Madam Mayor.
Yes, well, I'm just telling everybody too, right now. So, you can all hear that. For the benefit of the public, though, I also wanted to read a little bit from this company and what they say about the Clock Tower Plaza, just so they, we can kind of have it stated on the record, part of our motivation for doing this exploration of doing this project. And it says that "The Clock Tower Plaza is owned by the city and therefore within the context of downtown, riverfront, hogbacks, and Third Street. It presents an immense opportunity to improve the vibrancy of downtown. An active and enhanced Clock Tower Plaza can become a catalytic public space and amenity that can help trigger and drive other investment and improvement to Main Street and downtown." It also mentions how it's a connecting point between the riverfront, the Train Depot, which brings in hundreds of thousands of visitors to our downtown. It further says that the plaza should be fun, attractive, comfortable, shaded, provide space for seating and gathering while supporting the adjacent businesses and retail of Main Street. Vendor incubator spaces may allow for small retail activity to anchor the plaza, and a potential water feature could provide further attraction for visitors. Of course, those are all just ideas. We are seeking public input on multiple levels, including in-face meetings and online surveys, to find out what the people of Canyon City want to have there. So, thank you for being a part of helping to execute this project. It's really, really exciting. Are there any other questions on that topic? Okay. Then, I do have a question on item C, and this is for the parking lot. And Ryan, I know we made this agreement three years ago, and I'm curious, have we been able to monitor, assess how much use it has gotten? So, we're renting some space behind TSAC's new building at the Fremont National Bank. Do we know how much is it actually being used by the people?
We have issued parking permits over the three years. We've issued about two dozen parking permits, but, you know, on a day-to-day basis, how much it's utilized, I think councilman Smith...
I can handle this one. I parked there every day.
Better responded.
You parked there every day? Okay. What is it?
It's almost, I wish we had a bigger one because it's overutilized, especially when classic furniture has their big trucks delivering it. I mean, it's just their basic business, but sometimes when the trucks are there, it makes it a little impossible to park back there. So, you do have to park on Main, which is what we try not to do as business owners, to utilize that space for our clients and customers. But it's very much utilized.
Thank you. Thank you for that. I appreciate that. Do you know, what did we pay last time for the agreement?
Oh, I included that in the email. I don't recall off the top of my head.
No, I don't think I saw that.
It was around $53, $5400 last year. We're expecting it to go up about $1,000, and then, as the assessor reassesses, it's based off of how much property tax they're assessed. So, subsequent years will increase based off of those taxes.
So, and I was a little curious on the contract under item 4 under rent. So, it talks about, and I could see, you know, the assessment, you know, that we'd pay part of the stormwater and water charges and maybe a part of 10% of the property taxes. But can you explain a little bit more about the annual utilities billing?
That is the stormwater fee.
Okay. So, that is the stormwater fee.
Yes.
So, we're not paying 10% of TSAC's utility bills in general?
No. So, it's, you know, we're paying the property tax, we're paying 100% of the utility bill, and then they want a little 10% on top of those two totals.
Okay, got it. Okay, that's helpful. Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to speak a little bit about floculants, which happens to be in my wheelhouse.
Okay.
The, so, in the mining industry, you use a lot of floculent. And the one concern could be, are we, you know, being subject to proprietary pricing? In other words, if a company has a proprietary product, are we seeing non-competitive market forces involved in how prices are set? But the, for floculants for water treatment plants, that's a nationwide activity, you know, everywhere you have water treatment. And when I was in the mining industry, there were, the floculent companies would send representatives around to hawk their particular brand of floculent, and it was, they were really kind of the modern version of snake oil salesman, really. But, so, there's, I don't think that there's, given the nationwide market and that there are big companies involved, I don't think that there's too much that we have to worry about in terms of seeing a pricing that's not in line with market forces.
Thank you. Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Because city administrator Stevens had pulled together the pricing information on the lease agreement, I just wanted to share it.
Oh, thank you.
The 2022 payment was $5,374.72, and the estimated 2023 payment would be $6,782.60. Once you take out the property tax and the stormwater, the profit is about $616. Or, sorry, $616.60.
Very minimal. So, I will say that also, when talking to downtown businesses, that public restrooms are one of the things they always mention, but they also always mention the lack of parking downtown. And so, this is one of the tools that we're implementing to help provide more parking for downtown, especially for employees or residents that are living upstairs, to have a place that they can park for long-term parking, not take up those prime spots right in front of businesses. As far as parking goes, for the benefit of the public, we're also looking for further solutions, particularly at the old Dry Cleaners. It's a building that's high, very dilapidated, has some contamination. There's no recovery of that building, and we're looking at opportunities to turn that into further downtown parking for Canyon City. I do have another question on H for Veterans Park, the chain link fencing. How high is that fencing? I'm just a little worried because I know we had conversations, a lot of businesses like, this is going to be a beautiful riverfront area with commercial development, like, we want to make this like a prime aesthetic place. Chain link, doesn't sound like it has that.
It's black PVC coated. You've got the trees right behind it, so, you know, hoping that it will blend in, so it's not very noticeable.
Six feet.
Six feet.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I just needed to say that. Anything else from council on the consent agenda? Then, we, I would love to get a motion to adopt the consent agenda and agenda. Councilmember Smith?
Madam Mayor and council, I move to adopt the consent agenda as written.
Second.
Oh, wonderful. We got a motion and a double second. Any discussion? Call vote.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
B. Smith?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
Thank you, council, and thank you, staff. Ryan, could we please have our administrators' report now?
Yes, ma'am. You have the written reports in your binders. Couple of things of note. The first one is the Rhodes Avenue project, so we have not received that permit from the railroad yet. We've been waiting about a year. We're still trying to satisfy some of their questions. Their questions are kind of coming back jumbled amongst all the permit applications that we have, so we compile those responses to those questions and send them back, trying to put them back on the right side. But at this point, we're not going to be able to meet the deadline for the ditch company to have the ditches turned back on. If, you know, if we were to start that work tomorrow, we missed our window with the boring company. So, we're going to take the Rhodes Avenue project as far as we can, which should be, we're going to try and cover both of the driveways of the Humane Society and then, you know, get that paved for the neighborhoods south of there. And then, as we wait and work through the issue with the railroad, we will work on scheduling for the boring companies to come back and do the boring for the additional lines as soon as we have that information on the permits. And we can't do that until after the ditches turn back off in the fall, so we'll be putting this one, putting this one on the shelf, I guess, until we get a little bit further down the road with the railroad. But, you know, as far as the work that we've done in roads, you know, we've got a good delineation of completed work, and we will work with both sanitation district and the county to pave everything that is... the county to pave everything that is fully complete.
All right, and you say you're shelving, this is just a temporary summer shelf?
That is correct, until, while the, while the ditches are running and we can get back in there. There's a lot of logistical things that we have to coordinate there. The other item of note in the administrator report is regarding the K-9 program and the effect of the new medicinal mushroom legislation and what that, the effect that's going to have on our K-9 program. We're going to be forced to retire K-9 Merlin and K-9 boots, and then we're working on a solution for K-9 tier to see if we can find a new home for him with another department or potentially another solution there. So, you know, it's one of those unintended consequences of legislation that gets passed at the state level.
Thank you. Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just going back to the Rhodes Avenue Project for a bit, so essentially, there won't be any ongoing impact to any of the people living or working on roads.
During the summer?
Mm-hmm.
No, there will be, you know, the contractors worked out an arrangement with an adjacent property owner for storage of materials, but as far as construction goes, there will be no construction activity, roads will be open during the summer.
Thank you. Yeah, that's a good question. Anything else for Ryan?
I do have one note here, I know Cindy had sent out an email trying to schedule a council retreat. We've got two dates that we're looking at, and I think one of, one or, one of you may not be available, but we're looking at March third or March tenth. We heard from six out of the eight of you, so just want to see if we can...
I responded, I can do the third, I cannot do the tenth.
And I can do the tenth, and I cannot do the third.
Actually, the tenth, I will be out of country.
Okay. We may look for a couple of other dates, then.
Yeah, sorry, we are a busy bunch.
Yep.
Yeah, they definitely want to have everybody able to attend.
No problem.
Would you say that?
Okay, so, anything else, Ryan?
No, ma'am.
Okay, we're going to move on to redistricting, and I will open the public hearing for this and invite you again to address this about redistricting.
We, in your packets, you have all of the redistricting information, you are missing the ordinance, and what we would request is that the, this particular agenda item is continued to a date certain of February twentieth, the next city council meeting.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion?
Yes.
That we continue the public hearing until February twentieth, 2023, regular city council meeting.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Call vote. Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
B. Smith?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
Well, we're just moving along, and we're going to move on to what appears to be the popular agenda item for tonight, and that's the introduction and adoption by title only of Resolution Two, Series 2023, entitled Establishing the Canyon City Water Committee. Ryan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. After we had our general government or vision meeting regarding source water protection, there was a lot of discussion about the formation of this committee. This is what staff has proposed to city council, we're open to suggestions or changes. This resolution consists of seven members appointed by city council, it would be chaired by a city council member that's designated by city council. The members of the committee would be composed of a Fremont County ditch or agricultural representative, one development representative, two Fremont County residents, one Fremont County commissioner, and two Canyon City council members. I did reach out to Commissioner Grantham, we've played a little bit of phone tag today. It's my understanding from the message that he left me that this was something that they were going to talk about as commissioners, they may have an interest in participating, but they, they had a question about whether or not they had the bandwidth to attend another meeting.
Of course, that's understandable, but thank you for the invitation, and I think we'll just probably keep it as an open invitation, if they wish to participate, that they would be welcome to. We always appreciate making sure that they are, their interests are represented. I'd like to find, and maybe council, you can help me provide some further clarification for those that are here and those that are listening, that the creation of this water committee, it has a broad mission, and we want to make sure that that's clear. It was formed when we had a discussion about a potential watershed ordinance, we wish to have a committee help us review and give advisement for potential changes to that watershed ordinance that could possibly come to city council, but also recognize that there is a number of water issues that is very prominent in the news nationally, and especially in Colorado. We wanted to make sure that we have our finger on the mark and we're ahead of the curve in making sure we're taking care of water rights and water, protection of our water in general, and many other issues, including, you know, issues with the ditches and other things that, that we are being good caretakers of, one of the most precious things that we have jurisdiction over. I would like further help in that, because I can't remember everything that we talked about. Councilmember Stein, do you have something to offer?
Yes, and I just spent all afternoon in a ditch meeting with the hydraulic ditch, and moving forward, this, both state and federal entities are going to be going through every state in the West, and we're going to have to account through our water law for every drop of water. And I think as a community, we, we need to be ahead of this, if we can, because, I mean, they've already started this, trying to figure out if they're going to send water to somebody else, and, and we've already had issues in the state where there was a lot of water rights bought from a ditch by Aurora, which caused a horrible situation for a lot of rural communities. So, I think it behooves us, it's very important that we do this, and, and we bring, and I like to see that you, we're going to have people that represent the ditches, and because they're the ones that are kind of struggling to deal with this, because they don't have resources that even we do. So, I just, I wanted to make sure that Big Brother is, is starting to look at our water. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Stein. Councilmember Tracy?
Thanks, Madam Mayor, and I just wanted to add to some things that have already been said. I wonder if we should expand on the language in, number one, just to make it clear that we're really talking about making, that the committee would make recommendations concerning all city, city with a capital C, all city water issues, to include, as stated here, development regulations, conservation, maybe add in water quality and quantity, maybe we want to add in some other language there. Not that we need to list everything, but I just think it's important that we do just what you said, Mayor Smith, just that we make this a committee that water, city water-related issues would go through this committee at all times.
Corey, do you have anything, is that an acceptable recommendation?
It certainly is, I mean, however council determines it appropriate, whether you want to include water quality, water quantity, whatever, and it could simply say, make recommendations concerning all water issues, and then including, but not limited to, and then perhaps whatever additional items you'd like to include in that list.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess my only concern about that would be, I wouldn't necessarily want the committee to have to, I guess, be a bottleneck or be a clearinghouse for when our water department needs to buy new water filters or needs to, you know, move forward on a bid that would be coming to council. I certainly understand and support Councilwoman Tracy's perspective that it really be a holistic water committee and that it be looking at all things water-related, but I wouldn't want it to be kind of a step in the process, if that makes sense.
How about all legislative water issues? That would take, I think, out of the day-to-day, but would be more at the policy level recommendation.
Thumbs up from our water superintendent?
I would agree with that as well.
Okay. And I did have a question, it talks about the seven members, has two council members, a member of the Fremont County ditch or agricultural representative, a development representative, and then one Fremont County commissioner, if they so desire, and then it says two Fremont County residents. Does that include a Canyon City resident? Because, I mean, that's, you know, pretty important, too. Do we need to delineate, like, one Canyon City or one Fremont County, or?
Yeah, I, I think there, there are questions about, you know, how you want to divvy that up, if you want to, one Fremont County, one Canyon City, you know, one thing, you know, you may have somebody speak tonight about including recreation as a, as a user group.
Well, that's a good segue to inviting some people who requested to speak to council, and then maybe we can include that in our robust discussion tonight. So, we will go ahead and start by inviting Chris Moffett to address city council. Each of you will have three minutes.
Hello, how's it going? I'm Chris Moffett, I'm the president of Royal Gorge Rio, we are Fremont County's river-based 501(c)(3), and we focus on conservation, safety, and community outreach. I'm here specifically to talk about this. This ordinance, to me, seemed like a very, like a no-brainer at the beginning, and to hear it going into a committee that may last, I don't know, until how long, is, is, is something that's interesting to me. We all don't have a lot of time, so I wanted to just address some stuff. At the very first meeting, when this committee was proposed, it seemed like the ordinance was just going to go through to me. I felt like there was a bit of eye-rolling from some people that were at that, and so I'd like to address the history of our county and water and why we should definitely focus on this. Our Arkansas River Corridor, if you go along it, there's some great, beautiful sections that are natural, there's some sections that Royal Gorge Rio and the city have spent thousands of dollars, tens of thousands of dollars on fixing, but then there's a very large section that has been ravaged by the former industry that was in the area, and they just dumped their waste and refuse along the river corridor. We're now paying for it, they didn't set any money aside to fix that. We have Cotter that trashed the water of Lincoln Park, messed up everybody's wells, and they had to pay to bring the water district to the citizens there. People died from that, people got sick. And it took fourteen years for that area to be taken out of superfund site, so it was nineteen eighty-eight to two thousand four, sorry, two thousand two, that that was a superfund site declared by the EPA. We're, you know, I think that this committee needs more members from the public. I know a commissioner is a good idea, I know industry and ditches, things of that nature, but I believe recreation should be there, and I believe that there should be far more private citizens that are just interested in having quality water coming out of their tap, because that's what this is about, is protecting our water. It's our most important natural resource. Canyon City would not be here without the river, and we're very lucky to have what we have in this area, and we want to protect it for future generations to come, because the former generations did not care, they did not set money aside, and they didn't do the right thing, and this is an opportunity for us as a community to go forward and do the right thing, so.
Thank you, Chris, very much. Are there any questions for Chris in particular?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Emily, Tracy?
Hi, thanks, just wanted to thank Chris Moffett for his statement, but also wanted to say that the Cotter site is still a superfund site and has been since nineteen eighty-four, it will continue to be for some additional years. We're in the middle of the process of having the current site owner and the regulators decide what additional testing needs to be done in the community, Lincoln Park area and other areas. And even, you know, the community group that's kind of, the community advisory group that's involved very regularly in this, will be, among many other things, will be asking for sediment testing in the Arkansas River, because we really don't know to what extent the river was affected by that. There's been water sampling, but there has not been sediment testing there, so I just wanted to point that out, that it's a very long-term water-related issue, and I appreciate, Chris, that you brought that up, thanks.
You're, you're welcome, and I had so many more, but, you know, only had three minutes, so. But, I mean, water, what else do you need in life? You know, you need, you need water, you need food, and you need shelter, and water is so important, I feel silly saying that, but it's just, what else is there?
Thank you for your recommendations, you have some really good points that we need to, to consider, and we'll call upon you if we need some more questions through this discussion. But next, we would like to hear from Martin Welch.
Good evening. I'm also one of the board members of RG Rio, and I fully agree with what Chris had to say. We all know that our water comes from the Arkansas River, we're very blessed to have that resource here. It's fairly unique in a lot of ways, we're so close to the source, you know, the snow melt that gives us the water, and we have such a gift here, we, you know, I think we're all in agreement that we need to do everything we can to protect it. In all my travels, everywhere I've gone, whether in-country, out-of-country, I've never been anywhere where the water is as good as we have it here. I don't know if anybody, I mean, whether it's east coast, west coast, Gulf Coast, anywhere you go, I mean, we truly have an amazing water source. I guess for me, for a solution, you know, I'm, as a designer, and, you know, simplicity is always the goal. You know, the simplest solution is usually the best solution. Committees are rarely simple, if ever. And so, we were obviously in strong favor of the ordinance as is. I think Travis has done a fantastic job, he's so good at what he does, he's consummate professional, he has a passion for, for what he's doing, and I guess I feel like he should just simply be enabled and empowered to, to take the steps that he needs to protect the, the resource that he's been given authority over. So, really, that's my contention, I think everybody in here is in agreement, none of us want filthy water. Without taking steps up front, I, I like what the councilwoman said, that I think that the, the quality requirements are going to get more stringent, and I was just speaking with Travis earlier, you know, the situation in Uray right now, where they also had this fantastic water source that the state has come in and is now requiring, you know, a twelve million dollar new, I can't even think of the term, but basically to clean the water, you know what I mean, a new facility to treat the water, that's a water treatment system. You know, that could, that could happen here. If we allow the Arkansas River to become polluted by not taking the necessary steps that we all agree need to be taken, we could be facing something like that, too, down the road, where we're, have contaminated water or something like that. Anyway, we all know that people that, that recreate, you know, obviously RG Rio, we, we focus on recreation as a big part, and it's not just for having fun, there's people that enjoy and recreate on the river, also those people that tend to not want to throw a bottle in the river, not want to throw their trash in the river, want to take care of it, because it is something that, that becomes a part of their families, their, their traditions, and that's all I have to say tonight, thank you very much.
And Martin, I just have a clarification question, when you say that you're fully in favor of the ordinance as is, are you referring to the watershed ordinance?
Yeah, yeah.
That we, the council was learning about in January?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and, and, you know, I wish, I'm not as educated on all that, I'm not a water expert, I'm a real estate appraiser, I tell people, because it's always about irrigation shares and this kind of thing, I'm not a water... I'm not a water appraiser. I'm not really qualified for, you know, for that aspect of it at times. So, you know, I want to get more educated about, you know, what this, what this actually even entails. But just on its surface, what I know is, is that, I think we all agree we want to take care of the water. And I would hope, like the other councilwoman mentioned, that, you know, a committee wouldn't, wouldn't clog that process up. You know, again, I really, you know, in speaking with Travis and just, and just kind of learning where he's coming from and, and his, and his passion and professionalism, education on that matter, you know, I think, I think that we're in good hands there, so.
Thank you. Really appreciate your address. Seeing, City Council, Martin. I will say that, just as an education piece, that as much as some parties are in favor of that watershed ordinance as is, we've also had a lot of people that are absolutely against it. And so that we have found, a lot of times, a lot of success in bringing a lot of, a variety of these people and representatives of many different organizations and entities and interests together to hash things out at the table. And we tend to get a really good product out of that. That's, and that's kind of our motivation for that. And Brendan Smith.
If I remember correctly, the whole notion of creating the committee was because council changes hands so fast, that the, the mention of the committee was so that there's people on this committee longer than we have terms. Am I mistaken?
I think that was a part of that conversation, that there's more people that are educated and aware and know all these things. Every time we get a new council member to represent a ditch, it's like a whole new, brand-new learning curve. And there's going to be a lot more people in that learning curve that are processed through that. Although, there is a good point, that if we're appointing somebody in a longstanding committee for the rest of forever and ever, we might want to put some, some limits of time on this, where they have an opportunity to bow out at a certain time, or reapply, or have an opportunity for someone else to, to be appointed to the committee, so we can keep that education rolling. We do have one more citizen's request. Mayor Potem, you have something?
No, go ahead.
Okay, the last one we have for now is Gary Peterson.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. I'm here representing the Royal Gorge Preservation Project as the board chairman. In essence, the mission of the project is to protect the Royal Gorge region from the destructive effects of human activity. That's a short version of it. The, our Royal Gorge Preservation Project fully endorses the establishment of the Canyon City Water Committee, based on the initiative of Water Superintendent Travis Payne, Councilwoman Emily Tracy, and others. We believe that this committee provides an excellent and unique opportunity for the city of Canyon City to work in effective partnership with county counterparts. And reviewing the various aspects of this proposal, one commentary stood out to me that sums up the essence of this proposal. And it's, I'm going to give it to you. It's one sentence, and it was, came from your city administrator, Mr. Stevens. And here's the quote. The last place that we, this is from the Daily Record that was done recently.
See, you quoted correctly.
So I, so Kerry Canterbury is responsible for the accuracy of this quote. But the quote is, "The last place that we want to be is in a reactive state, where something is approved at the county level that may have a negative impact on the water system or the watershed, and we don't want, and we don't have a way to comment on that after the fact." To me, and from what I've read, that is the nuts of this whole matter here. We can have the council, we can have all the stuff going, but if we don't have the cooperation of the county, it's a problem. Canyon City is Fremont County. Pull Canyon City out of it, and you've got a lot of open space. And I know there's been issues in the past with it, but that separation, this is an opportunity to maybe overcome some of that. Actually, I also got some, a little rumor came back, that the fee that may be associated with people involving themselves with the watershed is probably akin, in terms of the amount, to a couple having a two-martini lunch at the Fremont provisions. You know, that's just my thought here. But, you know, it's a pretty paltry sum, actually, and so I'm not sure that that should be a real consideration. There's one other thing that came up also, however, before I finish. And that's that my cohort in the RGPP, Paul Tanner, did a deep dive in the Canyon City Daily Record. And as I picked him up tonight to come, he handed it to me in the car, because it's so hot off the press. But it's about a 10-year-old article that came back, and it's titled, "Commissioners Sign Onto Canyon City Source Water Protection." I'm not going to read this whole thing, but I'm going to give you a statement here. This is back when Ed Norton was around. It said, "District 3 Commissioner Ed Norton noted that while Canyon City water officials will be invited to comment on permit applications, on such things as mining in gravel pits, the county has no legal obligation to follow any recommendations." Now, this is an old thing. I don't know what the authenticity of it is and all. I do have one copy, because that's all Paul had at the time down there. But I'd like to leave it with somebody. I wouldn't suggest that it goes to the city attorney, but it does sound like a legal question.
We will take it, and we'll add it to the public record.
May I bring it up to you?
Yeah, your time is done, Gary. But there is a question for you from Mayor Potem Hamrick.
I have a different comment.
Okay. So I'm afraid your time is up. And to be equitable and fair to everyone, we need to honor that. We appreciate your comments very much, though.
Thank you. We strongly recommend the formation of this council, and that I go forward. Appreciate it.
Mayor Potem Hamrick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple of different comments. You know, I am, I currently chair the Energy Franchise Committee. And one of the things that, as chair of that committee, that I have been struggling with is time limits and products. And the, I think it's important that if we, as council, are going to make decisions, that we make sure that we give good enough direction to the committee about what we expect them to produce, and in what timeframe. The issue is, is that, is that water quality, water quality issues can be, can be pretty daunting, can present a pretty daunting learning curve as you're trying to understand and get to a place where you can make a recommendation. The, I have been, the, you know, I've been involved in water quality matters since 1985. I've designed, installed, and operated water quality monitoring networks. The, the, so, it, there's, one way to say this is that, is that if you, if, you know, we've talked a little bit about the Cotter site, although I don't agree with everything that was said about the site. One thing you can say is that scientists, engineers, hydrogeologists, hydrologists, geologists, regulators have been studying that site for 60 years. And according to some, they don't have it right yet. So, it's important for there to be a time limit on this committee, and, and I think explicit guidance on what, what it is we're looking for. Because there's, the, even if we narrowed it down to a pretty specific question, the field is so broad, because we do know that there's federal rules coming down about quantities. And that is, for sure, an important topic. People have concerns about quality. That, that is an important topic. But there could literally be spent years on each of those topics without reaching any conclusions. And so I think, I think it's important for us as a council to perhaps sharpen this, this, this resolution up a little bit. And, you know, considering the comments that we've heard about, about council turning over, maybe what we should do is, is put a one-year limit on this, for starters, to see where we get to, to see what, what can be done. But I think that we need to hear a recommendation from this committee about whether Canyon City should pursue water quality regulations, and what, what, given the current situation we have with water quantity, what are the appropriate actions for Canyon City to take, to be a player, and to make sure that we protect our rights in the water quantity issues? So I would, I would recommend that we limit this committee to a one-year period.
Kind of like a pilot program?
It can certainly be renewed. I mean, and it's appropriate that, as we get new council members, for them to weigh in also. And, and that we make sure that we ask the right questions. Because as it is, you know, development, regulations, conservation is a pretty big field. And, and what is it we really want to know? We want to know, should we, should the council engage in a rule-making effort for quality? And what, where should we, where should we come down on quantity issues?
Sorry, I'm taking notes. Councilmember Worthington?
I agree with a lot of what Councilperson Hamrick said.
Thank you. And, but I do also think that this could be a committee that needs to be, if nothing else, on standby. Because as legislative, as environmental issues come up regarding water, and it's coming up more and more, especially for Colorado, whether it's the Colorado River, the Arkansas River, or whatever, I think there's a lot of things that the city needs to keep a finger on in order to be ahead of the game, instead of being caught behind the game. And I agree with you, having been part of the Energy Committee, we have gone around, we've finally, I think, narrowing in on some certain things. But I think this is a committee that does need to be a long-term committee in the sense that may not meet every month, it may not meet every week. But when there is a topic that comes up, and I haven't heard the word "storage", and I really think, having lived here only 23 years, this is something that Canyon City has missed out on for many, many, many years, long before I've been here. And I think it's something that should still be considered. And it opens a whole can of worms when you start thinking about storage, because we all think of, you know, reservoirs and things that way. And that, of course, gets a lot of different committee, other committees upset and so forth. But I do think that there are definite issues that this city does need to continue to look at. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Schmisher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to speak for a moment about the committee's composition. I think, given the significant interest in the committee, that I personally would support increasing it from seven to nine, so that we do have enough seats that are open, both to Fremont County residents, Canyon City residents, perhaps a recreation representative, so that folks who are interested are able to participate.
Thanks. Well, and I also noticed it doesn't have a representative of a city staff expert on water. Is that, was that under discussion?
We typically, as city staff, are there as the subject matter experts, but not necessarily as a part of the committee.
Okay. So we will have subject matter experts involved? Does that sound right? And I liked your suggestion, too, of including, like, a water recreation representative. Maybe cutting down a Fremont County representative to one, and upping to two Canyon City representatives? Possibly? I mean, definitely want to hear from the council on what you think. I do see this committee being kind of our designated advocates and researchers, and that they have, you know, their eye on the ball for water issues. If, I mean, it's up to the council on what kind of motion you make. But if it is a one-year, I put that kind of like a one-year pilot program to see where we're going, if we need to make any adjustments for improvement, and go from there.
Madam Mayor, I didn't know if you saw my hand or not.
Please, Emily, thank you for speaking.
Thanks. Sure. Yeah, and maybe, before we even come to a decision about the makeup of the committee, maybe we should decide, in my mind, I was thinking of this as a standing committee, because it's, it's not really limited to a very specific issue that will go away in the future. Water, you know, there's always going to be water issues. So I think we need to make that decision first. If it is a standing committee, kind of like a planning commission, or a board of adjustment, or another standing committee like that, then, then that may drive, I think, the makeup of the committee. I think we're kind of narrowing in pretty well there. But we might want to build language in, as someone suggested, about maybe terms, two-year term, or four-year term, or whatever it is, subject to, just as board of adjustment and so forth, they can reapply if they want to continue on. But I do think we need to make that bigger decision. I don't personally see the need to do anything like a pilot, because we just know there are a lot of water issues that the city deals with all the time. So I would just suggest that we make this a standing committee, and then decide what else we need to build in.
Any further discussion from council?
I just had a question. So, if I'm remembering correctly, because this was January, when we had the general government meeting on this, the, the portion of the ordinance that was unlike by most of the people that showed up was about building. And there was an engineer that needed to be hired in the process. Am I on the right page? And that was the complaint by the building community, was on the engineer hired?
I, I think there was more to it than that. I think there was some confusion about how far the watershed went, and what, what part of it, what geographic part of it was included in the ordinance, and things like that.
I guess my question is, is the committee going to look at the ordinance? Is that one of the things that they're tasked with?
That would probably be the first thing that they're tasked with, yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I guess, who would be doing the tasking? If it's not in the ordinance, and we're not kind of giving that kind of direction, and city staff isn't leading, the committee, a city councilperson is. I guess I would like to better understand that from the city administrator's perspective. Thanks.
I think, you know, especially if we change it to more legislative issues, as the city attorney recommended, you know, as those issues come up, those would be things that could go before the water committee. I don't know that we would assign them, per se, but, you know, the things that we're raising as a staff level to, to this committee, the things that are concerned, or propose legislation at a city level that we want buy-in from.
Maybe if I could ask my question in a slightly different way.
Well, I think Corey also wanted to say something.
Just one thing, and that is, Section 2 of the resolution says, right now, "The committee shall conduct work as directed by the city council." So, it is this council that will give the marching orders in terms of what the committee should be working on, under this, under the current form of resolution.
Thank you for that. I guess I would be interested in the city administrator, and, sorry, I should not have put that in my mouth, the city administrator and the water superintendent's perspective on kind of the conversation that we're having, in terms of what would be most useful, a more limited term with a very specific assignment, or kind of a broader standing committee?
Travis, do you have some thoughts?
Content expert.
So, I guess I'd be in more favor of the broad, broad-based committee, and being able to talk with, through more issues, so I could see, like, things like water rates probably be a very good thing to have more perspective on, and how we should divvy up those water rates and the questions of fairness that we've had. That would be a good topic to have. So, I think in the interest of having more topics, that it could be more of a standing committee that could meet as needed. That would be kind of my, my take on it.
We've, we've got things like the lead and copper rules coming down, so those are, you know, another topic. You know, we, we're looking for, we're always looking for public engagement as we, in about a year or so, we're going to be getting into water master planning for the system, and having a committee to help, you know, improve with public engagement may be an option. So, I don't think there's a lack of things to talk about. I would agree with that. I think it's, it's just a matter of what, what councils- I think it's just a matter of what council's prerogative is and how, you know, whether or not you foresee this becoming a bottleneck or not.
Oh, it is nice to have advisement from those who are well-studied on that topic, because it really helps give validity to their recommendations.
And then I had just one more comment on, you know, when we were talking about kind of like the question of whether we talk about all water-related topics. I mean, one of the things that have been brought up before is there's probably some topics that shouldn't be talked about in open committee, like our water rights portfolio, things of that nature. So there are probably some things that probably should not be handled in open committee, just to kind of throw that out there as well. There shouldn't be, all topics should not be talked about.
And I do think, at least my thought, in adding the word legislative is that's ultimately something the council would consider. So it covers a wide variety of whether it be water rates certainly, regulations, source water protection. It could be anything that council ultimately might look at adopting by ordinance or resolution. Water rights, frankly, in our portfolio is not included in that. It would not be legislative.
You say water rights is not, would not be included?
Not our water rights portfolio, no. Those are legal issues that we frankly do not want to share, because we want to, oftentimes maximizing our water rights is strategic in nature, and other water rights users may be adverse to us.
Okay, we have, I'm in the queue, Mayor Protem Hamrick, and then Councilmember Stein.
Thank you. So just to follow up, Corey, on what you said earlier about number two, the committee shall conduct work as directed by council. What, how would you see that that direction occurred? Or can you talk to us a little bit about that?
That is entirely up to council. It really is. So, you know, I think of, to the extent the Planning Commission is the development-related advisory board to the city council, by law, the only thing they do, under state law, is a master plan or a comprehensive plan. Everything else frankly is directed, either directly or indirectly, through the city council. Currently, in your land development ordinance, you have language that articulates what, for example, changes in land use ordinances go through Planning Commission. So you can do it through this resolution. You can do it if there is a water issue that comes before the council that you want to send to the committee for their advice. You could do it that way, on a sort of topic-by-topic. You could give them sort of initial marching orders. We want you to look at the source water protection ordinance or anything else. It's really council's prerogative in terms of how you task this committee.
Thank you. And so I have a suggestion there. My suggestion is, is that it seems to me that we can spend a lot of time talking about the charter, if we want to call it that, for this committee. But perhaps that's something that would be perhaps the first, you know, product that the committee might produce, would be what they think the most important issues are. Bring that back to council for, you know, a smile on a nod or whatever. And so perhaps we can put some language in here that says, that does task the committee with a committee direction or a committee charter to come back with some specificity. I mean, I would not want to hear from the committee, "Well, we want to regulate water quality." Well, that sounds nice, but what does that mean? And what does, what would that mean for the city? And so the, I would ask, I would think that it would be appropriate that for whoever we select as committee members here, that their first task would be to say what they think in an ideal world their charter was with some specificity. And that, I think, can be, I don't know that we need to craft that into the ordinance necessarily, but as directed by us, if we're, you know, if we're interested in that idea, we can always do a thumbs up or thumbs down or something like that. But, or we can try and craft it into the language. But it would seem to me that that, you know, I think the discussion here could go on for hours about what the committee should look at. But maybe we should ask the committee to decide that for themselves and bring it back to council for direction.
Would that need to be in the ordinance, or is that, we could just be implied as us giving them direction?
I don't.
If the council agrees.
Based on Section 2 of the existing resolution, I think that could be, without being in the resolution, be council's initial direction, sorry, is for the committee to work to bring back a recommendation on what it believes its initial tasks should be.
Okay. And we do have Councilmember Stein next in line.
I think if we look at what this committee should be thinking about, we should look at it as maybe a pyramid. The pyramid base, I think, none of us are experts in water law. And, but there are water laws that make our community possible, that keep our community irrigated and get our water that we get from the river. And I don't, and I really, I'm the worst one here. But that we need to know more about how those laws interact with our community, because there is a network of water laws all around us. And so when we make decisions that pertain to us or, you know, the immediate community, I think we need to educate ourselves just a little bit more. Thank you.
Are you saying educate ourselves as councilmembers or educate our committee? Like, that is part of their tasks is getting education?
Right, and, you know, the committee themselves, but then to share it, you know, back with the rest of council. Because, you know, from time to time, we do vote on things that interact with water issues in our community and water rights, other people's water rights. So I think we all need to know a little bit more about it.
Got you, absolutely.
Thanks.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Attorney Hoffman actually answered my question. Thanks.
Okay. I would like an opportunity to the public, if you have any further comments that you would like to make that invite you to do so. Looks like Doug would like to come on up. And please state your name and address, though, for our public record. You also have a three-minute limit, to be fair and equitable to all people who address council.
My name's Doug Cohen, I live at 1102 Vine Street. I have some concerns here that I speak from the irrigation point of things. And there's already a whole lot of regulations there, and that this committee does not think that they can overrule or cause more stricter, strict regulation on irrigating companies. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Anyone else who would like to address council this time? All right. Well, it feels like we might need to hash out some amendments. Or one great big amendment. Any recommendations on how to do this? We've had a couple of things to talk about, time limits. We've had some discussion about adding some wording in Item 1 for all legislative, but water issues to include but not limited to, and that would include water quantity and quality possibly. We also have some potential changes for the makeup of the committee. Corey, do you have a recommendation? Those are three pretty major things that would need to be voted on.
Well, I think the term is something you'll have to hash out as a policy matter. But as it relates to Section 1, I could certainly recommend that it simply read, "The city of Canyon City hereby establishes the Canyon City Water Committee, the committee to review, evaluate, and make recommendations concerning all legislative water issues to include but not be limited to development, regulations, water quality and quantity, and conservation for the city of Canyon City Water Department." And I think that captures both being a legislative, you know, focused on legislative issues, issues that would come before council, and also captures water quality and quantity, even though they're likely already included within development and regulations. If that's something that is important to council, we can certainly add those two components.
Okay, so that would be one recommendation for an amendment. Do we need to make several votes of amendments? Can we do that, or does it have to be one great big?
Council prerogative, but I guess my recommendation would be to start, if that, for example, if the language I just read was acceptable to council, then that would be, we'd sort of have Section 1 resolved.
So we can make a motion to amend Section 1?
Or simply wait and see if you can get consensus on everything and then do a motion to amend with everything. Again, it's council's prerogative.
Okay, so let's start with Section 1. And council, I guess, getting maybe a some sympathy, want to move forward with that language?
I have a quick question, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Should I go ahead?
Yes, please.
I just wonder, in Corey's suggested language, do we need the word "city" before the word "legislative"? Just to make it clear, we're not talking about state or federal, or maybe it's not needed.
Well, because there is some potential federal or state legislation that would affect the city that we would need advisement for.
Sure.
Mayor Protem Hamrick?
And in reading Number 1, Number 1, I agree with Corey's suggested language, and I would be in favor of adopting that. But the, in reading this, it says, "The city of Canyon City hereby establishes the Water Committee to review, evaluate, and make recommendations for the city of Canyon City Water Department." And so I think that we should strike the city water department. I think it's the city that the committee needs to make recommendations to.
I agree.
Council, are you comfortable moving forward on Item 1 with a thumbs up? Or do you want to have an actual vote on Item 1? I mean, we'll ultimately vote on it at the final product. Okay, yes.
"City of Canyon City hereby establishes the Canyon City Water Committee, per en, the committee and per en, to review, evaluate, and make recommendations concerning all legislative water issues to include but not be limited to development, regulations, water quality and quantity, and conservation for the city of Canyon City."
Maybe what are your thoughts on how you'd like to move forward on this?
I don't think it's necessary, but I'm not opposed to the change either.
Andrea? Tim? Okay. Thumbs up. Okay, so we're good with moving forward from Item 1. Item 2, we've talked about, that the work will be directed by the city council. But I don't know if we need to put in ordinance that we're going to, are we okay with tasking the committee for recommending to us what they want their initial task to be? Or vice, let's have a discussion about that.
No, I think that's a good idea. Ask the committee to discuss what they want council to do.
Well, so, but I think the question is, should we include language so directing them? Or will this discussion suffice?
Yeah, I mean, I think this discussion will suffice if council, again, if council, upon approving the resolution, says, "And your first task is come back to us with what you want us to task you with." Staff will make that happen.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I guess my concern with that is that we do have a couple of items already on the docket that we know that we want this water committee to opine on and to discuss and to make recommendations on. So I guess I'm a little bit concerned about their first task being to come up with the tasking when we already have a couple of things that we know that we want them to work on. Thanks.
And I would just say it can be both. So you can do, you know, for example, the source water protection ordinance and bring us back your priorities you think we think you should direct on.
Is there another item that you want in addition to the source water protection ordinance?
Well, I guess I would defer to the city water department and the city administrator if the lead and copper rules are something that need, that the committee should be looking at right now, or if there are other things on the docket, like water conservation or like the new water rate study that we really, you know, we've been talking about for a while now as a council that, you know, we would like to see them prioritized. But I would defer to the city administrator and the city water superintendent.
Yeah, I certainly think the source water protection plan is something that we want to, you know, consider, since that has gone to council already. But, you know, absolutely, I think, you know, we're going to have to, you know, the committee is going to have to hash out, you know, how often they're going to meet. And, you know, depends on how much you want to put on them initially.
And I would just add that I think when the city administrator talked about why city staff is not a member of the committee, city staff is going to be a part of that discussion on what it believes are priorities and try to get buy-in from the committee so that the circle comes back to council on matters that staff believes also should be in front of them and in front of you.
Is that sufficient, Councilmember Schmisher?
Sure. I mean, if it's coming back to us, I just worry about the length of time that that process will take, but sure, happy to do it that way.
Andrea?
I think according to the wording, we're covered, because it says to include these but not limited to. So I think we're definitely covered there, that we can expand it as we need to.
Tim?
So the only additional comment I would make, I agree with everything that's been said. The only additional comment that I would make is that the, not only should we, once the ordinance is passed, say, to the committee through the city representative, that the water protection ordinance is high on the list, but in addition, that the list of what the committee needs to work on and perhaps even some timeframes of what the committee may think it's going to take should be provided to us within a quarter. You know, that we should expect a report from the committee within a quarter for us to act on. But that can be direction.
Yeah. I was just going to say, I don't think that needs to be in the resolution. It could just be part of the direction.
Correct.
Okay. Brandon?
I'm good with how it's written.
Okay. And Kathy? Emily?
Yes, I'm good.
Okay. So let's move on to the makeup of the committee. There has been some talk about maybe tweaking that a little bit. Is there any suggestions on what you would like to see? Councilmember Schmisher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would suggest that we have it be up to nine members and to add one recreation representative, one Canyon City representative. I also just wanted to throw out there the idea of a representative from the upper arc water. I think they have a legislative liaison, so they might have some really interesting information and insight for the committee that others may not have, just hearkening back to Councilwoman Stein's point.
Just a suggestion, like when we were on the, when I was on the Energy Committee, sometimes we would bring in people like that to present. And not necessarily be a full-time member, but somebody that, yes, a subject expert.
It may be, it may be a little bit difficult to get participation from others that have to drive aways.
Ryan Stevens.
One additional recommendation regarding the Fremont County Commissioners, because we don't know whether or not they are interested or not, but city attorney suggested the possibility of having, or their designee. So it could be the Commissioners or somebody that they designate to be on the committee to represent the county.
And so, for example, in the urban renewal context, even though the representative right now right now from the Fremont County Commissioners is in fact a commissioner, the statute allows them to appoint a designee instead. So it just gives them flexibility if they want to appoint someone to serve on that. It's, doesn't have to be one of them.
I like that.
I do have a question though. Do we want to have only one Canyon City citizen but two Fremont County citizens? I, I feel like maybe that should be flipped where we need to have more representation for our citizens, but also recognize that decisions we make influence Fremont County. I just would like to put that out there. Travis?
I was just going to provide a little clarification on that. I, I think our idea of saying Fremont County residents is just that they could be city or, or county, not that they had to be county but not city. So it's just opening up, just because the water district does go out in the county, you know, it's, it's not only city residents that are water users. So that was, that was the intent behind it, that they could be city or county wasn't.
A city or county?
So, so what about saying something like three Fremont County residents, one of whom shall be a Canyon City resident, so that you have at least one that is Canyon?
Or potentially, you know, or the representatives have, you know, live within the water district.
Yeah, that could be, sure. Yeah, water district.
So instead of saying Fremont County, they'd be?
Say three water districts.
Three water district?
I'm concerned about limiting it to just water district, especially if one of the topics is the source water protection ordinance because that's obviously impacting a much larger area than just the water district.
Okay. Are we okay for saying three Fremont County residents, one of whom shall be a Canyon City resident?
At le, at least one, correct?
What's that?
At least one.
Okay.
And then adding a representative from the water recreation? Is there any better terminology we need to use besides just water recreation? Representative?
Maybe rec or conservation? I'm not sure.
I like that. Rec or conservation?
So we have one Fremont County ditch or agricultural representative, one development representative, three Mo, three Fremont County residents with at least one of whom must, or what, at least, ah, my words are getting messed up, but, but one must basically, at least one shall be a city resident, one Fremont County Commissioner or designee, and two Canyon City council members.
And one recreation, water recreation or conservation representative.
Make sure that's nine. So we're good with nine? Is that, Kathy, Brandon, John, Emily? Emily, your hand's up.
Uh, yeah, just, I, I guess I don't have a strong feeling either way, but it looks as if the committee could potentially be weighted pretty heavily with non-residents. I don't know if anyone is concerned about that, but I just think we need to be aware that that total makeup, you know, I, I personally would maybe say of the three county residents, at least two reside in the city or maybe say at least two reside in the water service area, area, or I, I don't know, because I think many of these others could be non-city residents and since it's a city committee, we might want to consider the impact or potential impact of that.
Council member Smith?
Um, just, just a comment on your comment there, Emily. When I think of people that are going to join this committee, I'm looking at guys like Manny Colon, who's a county representative. I believe Doug's in the county. Are you in the city?
He is.
City, okay. That, I was just, I would be cautious because we don't want to exclude these people like Manny who seems to be very knowledgeable, um, just moving forward. Sorry. Thank you.
Right. No, I, I think he would definitely fit under that, the ditch or agricultural representative too, so.
Because I feel comfortable that it says that it'll be at least one but not limited to, like, it could be all three Canyon City representatives. And, Tim?
No, I, I think it's great right now. I think the way.
I think how we have it, I, I like it.
Amy?
Could we define develop, not necessarily in the ordinance, but just have a common understanding of what development means in this context?
I'm guessing builders. That would be my.
The, the ones that will have to adhere to all of these regulations that may be passed?
That would be my understanding as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, we, you know, developers, builders, you know, potentially some, you know, an organization like FEDC, you know, representing the development community in some way or fashion.
Thank you.
That could, that could also, that could also cover the way that I would interpret it, firms that we have in town like Three Rocks, if they chose to participate, they could fit in that slot.
And then just to make sure I understand for this election, given that none of these are organizations other than the Fremont County Commissioner, they would apply and we would select.
Yes.
Is that correct? So it's not like all of the ditch companies would get together and say this is our representative.
Yes. They usually, I mean, they can get together and decide who's going to submit a letter of interest. Normally, it's give what, about 30 days? We put out a public notice, ask for letters of interest. The city council receives all of those letters and it comes to a public meeting and we choose who to fill in to represent the Canyon, represent Canyon City on this committee, if that's what we wish. That can be different.
Thank you. That was all I had.
Travis, stand anything else you want to add? Any other discussion?
The, the only other issue I think is the pilot issue that's still outstanding.
Oh.
So, so I'm, I'm good with not including any language on that. If we have a, a work product that we can expect, that we can review, then I'm, then I'm good.
Then I think, at least I, I think, I know what the drafting is from here, i- if council approves as amended.
Uh, what about?
I do have a question when I may. Did we want to add a sentence to number three? We had talked a bit about, do we need some kind of terms of office for these folks? I mean, we could add a sentence saying, for those who are elected officials serving on this committee, their term ends when their elective term ends. For those who are not elected officials, they have whatever we want it to be, two-year terms or four-year. So I'm just throwing that out, see if we want to do something like that.
Although usually it's multiple numbers are stag, staggered so that they don't all go out at the same time.
Right.
And that's more of a policy thing, right?
So, well, I, I do have a comment on that. I, I, I myself, I'm not ready to establish a standing committee, a standing committee, a, well, a standing water committee, and I would, I think I would vote against that just on that basis, that it was a standing committee. I think what we need to do, it's fine with me if we don't have a, a term, a, you know, a time limit for the, for the committee to act, except for their, their first report to council. But, but I, I, what I think we need to do is see what the, see how the committee is composed, see what, what, what they view their, their mission could be and how they intend to accomplish it and go from there. I mean, we can, we can amend, amend this at any time, but I would be opposed tonight to establish a standing committee.
Corey, any reactions?
The only reaction I would make is one of the things that council member Tracy said about the sitting, sitting council member. If it says city council member, that means it is a prerequisite to be on council. So I don't think you have to identify that term and then whether or not you have terms, you could certainly put it in tonight's resolution. Frankly, you could, you can amend this resolution anytime. You could also, sort of as a hybrid, on the, if you have a lot of interest and you have nine members, you could, in, in the resolution appointing the members, create the terms at that time.
Okay. Any ideas from council? I mean, it feels like it might be premature to put in time limits until we get a little farther in the process. Council member Worthington?
Thinking to my experience on the energy committee, I think we had such a startup time that was needed to bring people up to speed on the electric energy industry that I think in a sense bringing, bringing that thought process over here to the waters, a lot of the time is going to be, depend on the people that are chosen and what their background knowledge is. So in the sense of not setting up time limits, it's basically, because it's going to depend on who's on there and how much time it's going to take to just bring people up to be able to have good input and also good recommendations.
Agree. There is a level of discovery that has to be done before, before moving forward.
Good points. Are we comfortable with that for now? If there's no further discussion, I, I feel like it's time for a motion and even after the motion and the second, we still can have more discussion if needed. Council member Schmisher, are you ready to take this one on?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number two, series of 2023, with the following amendments. Section one stating, "The City of Canyon City hereby establishes the Canyon City Water Committee, the committee to review, evaluate, and make recommendations concerning all legislative water issues to include but not be limited to development, regulations, water quality and quantity, and conservation for the City of Canyon City." And with an amendment to section three, changing the composition to three Fremont County residents, one of which must live in Canyon City, and adding one recreation or conservation representative.
I would just tweak a little bit that it's at least one Canyon City resident. So it opens up a possibility for.
At least one. Oh, I'm sorry. Fremont County and amending one Fremont County Commissioner to read one Fremont County Commissioner or designee.
And I, I don't know if I heard you say it, but changing it from seven, up to seven to up to nine members.
Up to nine, yeah.
I will second that.
And did we include one representative from the water?
Yep.
Recreation, conservation? Okay. Just want to make sure because there's a lot going on. Okay. Well done. That was really good amendment and a motion.
And a second.
And we had a second. Thank you. Any discussion? I'll call those, please. Council member Dennehy?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
B. Smith?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
The motion passes. We will now put out a public request for letters of intent. Encourage everyone in the audience to participate in, in gathering those letters. Thank you very much for the robust discussion. I think the best product came out of that and look forward to seeing everybody Wednesday. This meeting is adjourned.